Hey, thanks for all of you coming today and we'll call the meeting to order. Is there any public comment, Madam Clerk? All right. Ms. Marty Arrowood.
Marty Arrowood, 114 Shrimp Street. Before I begin, I want to remind the Board of their vision statement. It says Holden Beach will utilize its available resources to be inclusive, family-oriented residential community that strives to protect and sustain its natural habitat, and recreational beaches for current and future generations. If studied, this makes the parks and rec budget a very high priority because it does deal with the quality of life. With that said, you've already reneged on an opportunity to provide inclusivity by voting against one walkway at Sailfish Park, making it accessible to everyone. The ADA mediation was for past exclusions. It doesn't mean future projects should not all be ADA compliant. The land in the 800 block I suggest would be ideal for those pickleball courts that you have on your list as one of the things. And since it's the fastest-growing sport among older Americans, that might be an ideal place to put it with no parking lot there, as far as making all the land parking. Finally, if the sand fund is one priority that seems to be driving all of your budget policies, maybe it's time to treat it like the canal dredging funds. Make it a yearly assessment to all property owners and include a percentage of B-Park to guarantee funding without having to take away budget items or redo budget items. It's in other areas of the state. It is an assessment, and maybe that's what we need to look at. You'll have a guaranteed amount in that sand fund every year. You can work to a goal, and we can do it based on a little bit more for oceanfront, a little bit less if you live in the dunes area, but then everybody would be paying for that sand. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Arrowood. Madam Clerk, does that conclude the list? Anybody that we committed that should have been called on? All righty, we consider that public comment is closed. Number three on the Agenda Budget Workshop, Proposed Objectives for the Fiscal Year 24-25. Who is going to speak to this?
I'll speak to two things as a preamble to it. Just in, as an announcement, you notice that our finance officer's not here. He's inbound with an EPA of about 4:30. He's coming back from meeting with the Finance Officers Conference from Winston-Salem, so he should be here soon. And since we're talking about, and please, if I've jumped a gun here, we're talking about the capital improvement plan, and it's not, you won't see Chris's budget, but I wanted to, since human capital is, in my opinion, is probably the most important one. We've got a pretty good running start with Christie's budget. And what I have done with the salary line items is taken this year's budget. Am I?
I forgot to hear.
Thank you, David.
I think, I thought we were past that. So what I've done for the salary-related items, I've gone ahead and using the most recent CPI index, have included an amount of 3.2% in the salary lines for a COLA and then a 5% merit pool to get us started on it. So those numbers are embedded and will be embedded in the salary lines moving forward, unless I'm directed otherwise.
David, can you just remind us, new people, what were they for last year?
It was 4-1.
For merit, for which?
It was, it was a 4-1 pool, and it wasn't discerned. It was set up as a pool.
It was four for merit, and I think it was 3.4 for?
Yeah.
That's what I'm asking.
For COLA? I think 3.4 last year. I'd have to double check, but that sounds right.
Yeah.
And just to clarify, those are in these numbers already?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good.
Yeah, we just want to go ahead and get the baseline out as a worst-case scenario.
Can I ask one question? Do you give the merit across the board? Or do you have 5% in there, so there's a lump sum, and then you give it however you see fit?
It's, it would be capped at 5%. I mean, let me answer it this way. I wouldn't award 2% to somebody and take the remaining 3% and give somebody else 8%. So it would be individually capped at 5%. Does that make, is that answered?
Yep.
How could anyone ever get? What are you doing with, if you give someone 2%, what do you do with the other 3% if you can't give it to someone else?
It falls back to some fund balance.
Got it. Anything else?
No, ma'am.
Can we talk about the objectives then, the first one?
That was the only thing I had.
No, thanks. So I think we need to add something to the very first one must-do with the ADA compliance. I think we should probably add ADA self-assessment of the town as a must-do. I know that you guys are probably already doing that from listening to Tim, but I think we just maybe need to formalize it and say, we've looked at this, 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 and we're going to do this, this. And not necessarily that we're going to do it in this budget, but we have a plan, you know, over the next five years or something. Does that sound reasonable, David?
Well, I don't know how to go about doing a self-assessment other than what I've read generally. It's what you're talking about in the upcoming year to perform a self-assessment.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I think it's just to get ahead of, I mean, if the arbitration agreement was making up for past things we should have done, this is looking forward in terms of making sure we don't end up in that situation again.
I mean, I know we're, as we build new things, we're making them ADA compliant. Like if we build a new walkway, it's ADA compliant. But then there's other things that we might not be touching, like Sailfish Park. It has some, it has some handicap parking spots. Are they up to standards? So just that kind of thing. We have to look at all of our properties and determine if we need to do anything. And again, we don't need to do it immediately, but we should have a plan.
As long as what you're asking for is that the self-assessment be conducted over the course of the next fiscal year to produce a document that would allow us to do those improvements over, basically capital improvement.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yes, that makes sense.
Now, I don't know what goes into a self-assessment, so I'm signing up for something that I don't know what I'm talking about.
We'll put explore in front of that. Does that make you feel better?
Sure.
I mean, I understand where you come from. I've read some stuff that it also depends on how big your municipality is as to whether or not you do a formal one and stuff like that. So I think we, like Tracy says, it's good to start a plan, figure out what we might do so we don't get caught again.
Now, as the lady mentioned earlier, you know, when you have special needs parking and you have a public park, there needs to be a hard surface available to the special needs people to get to the amenities within that park. So that's something we do need to keep in mind. Whether the neighborhood wants it or not. They can't be selfish and only let the park be for able-bodied people.
Well, there should be legal requirements that go with that, too. So that's what, we need to know what we're legally required to do, for sure.
Exactly.
I agree with you.
We have a lady that has, keeps reminding us what the legal aspects.
Roger that.
Christie, could you remind us again of what our three earmarks were? I had some notes, but I just want to make sure I got them right.
Sure. Currently, it is the, any beach nourishment, federal issues, which currently is your coastal storm risk management study. It is the stormwater for Chris. And it is the Lockwood Folly operations and maintenance money so that dredging would occur out of the federal budget, like the million-dollar appropriation they received before.
Right, okay. That's what I had.
And these are basically good for a year, or when do we?
We asked for them for the federal fiscal year budget, but just like the process we're seeing unfold that's taken so long for the federal budget to pass, the earmark that the Board asked for last year was pretty much just voted on today. So it could take longer and therefore go into another of our fiscal years, if that makes sense, because we're running a different year than they are.
Now, I think one of the things that David asked us to do was to prioritize this list so that you knew what you should be working on, and that's why I was asking about that. I want to also make sure that when we prioritize it, that we have the right earmarks based on what we think is a priority, right? If that makes sense? Because now we're considering some other ones that we got the email on, but I don't know if we want to change it based on what our priorities are. So do we want to try to figure out the priorities right now? Or do we want everyone to, I mean, I've already done my priorities, but if we want to take some time offline to do it and then come back? What's everyone's pleasure?
I have not done my homework.
Neither have I, and I thought what we were looking at today was the big-ticket items before you guys do your detailed budget work. And such that if there was something there, we went, yeah, don't even do that, or you forgot to add this, then you could go back and do your detailed work. I didn't look at prioritizing those either, so I am remiss. So I would rather take that offline.
Yeah, I think.
Okay, but we need to do that, because when they ask us for something, we have to see if it's one of our priority items, where it falls, don't you think?
Yeah, I mean, my thought was we would each individually score them, pass them to Heather, she would aggregate them and say, you know, here's, based on individual scoring, what the prioritized list is. And then we could debate those and determine if we want to tweak them.
All right, so can we get that to Heather by before our next, let's say by the end of next week? Because we're not, we don't have a meeting next week.
Yeah.
And we need to put a number on each bullet, not each section. So each bullet should have a number. Okay?
We rank, I don't know how many bullets there are. Let's say there's?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight. So we rank them one to thirty-eight.
Not that you count.
Well, I rank them one to thirty-eight, and if one of them scores five, that means we all ranked it first. So that's, the low score is the top in terms of, you know, coming up with an aggregated list.
Heather, are you okay with that?
Yes. And I'm sorry, you said you want to do it one through thirty-eight? Is that what you guys are all, or you want to do, like, in the past, we've done like one through five for each one, and then just the higher ones? However you guys want to do it, but I just want to make sure I explain it right to Commissioner Dyer after each five.
I think we score every one of these bullet points.
Just one through thirty-eight?
So there's one through thirty, unless, is it thirty-nine now that we have?
I say thirty-eight.
One through whatever, yeah.
I put over thirty, so.
Okay.
Gotcha.
And, and we don't have the?
Yeah, we haven't done the pier.
Well, I guess, did you count the pier in the thirty-eight?
I was just counting lines on here.
Yeah, I, I.
I would say we should put the pier in and have it just as one item, not all those sub-bullets.
Yeah, well, then what is the item? You know, because I could see.
Pier.
Okay. Combine with pier building, combine with, you know, the elements of what needs to be addressed.
Well, I'm just, you're going to just prioritize where does the pier fall? Is it before completing the water assessment? Is it before ADA compliance? Is it before, you know?
Yeah.
Throw it in there somewhere, wherever you think the priority is.
I think we should separate the pier from the pier, pier structure from pier building.
That's what I wanted to do last time, but we put the pier off the table.
Unless we want to address it, we need to talk about it now and hash it out.
I'm okay with that. Can we put the pier building as one bullet and the pier itself as another bullet when we're prioritizing? Any objections to that? Okay, we've got thirty-nine then.
So do you guys want me to take everything else from the pier off of there and resend them to you guys? Or you just want to just do it from what you have?
Yeah. That's just, did you work? Some of that stuff we need to talk about eventually, so it's good to have it on there, but. Okay, that's all I.
Yeah, and I guess still for the pier. Christie, can we get a list of what the must-dos are? I understand there's some legal requirements in the Part F grant that we've got to comply with. They're not in here because I don't know, I had a hard time reading the agreement and actually understanding what we're committed to.
We can work on a list for you, but there's more than just Part F tied to that, because there was land acquisition through a CAMA grant as well. So there's, there's more than one grant that's associated with that property.
What I'm, what I'm looking for, the must-do, so if we have a legal commitment to do something, I want to make sure it's on the list as a must-do. We must do whatever that commitment is. And I just wasn't sure, I mean, what we've committed to.
But, but your question was, can we get a list of those things?
Yeah, I mean.
Nothing must do related to the pier.
Because I, I mean, yeah, I mean.
Based on our?
It's where we're kind of, I hate to get down another level, but yeah, there are certain things we must do, and then other things we could do, should do, may do, nice to have. But the must-dos are the ones that I am most nervous about because we've got a legal commitment, and I don't know what it is.
Are you asking her to produce it right now?
No, no, no.
We just want an agreement that she'll do that.
Yeah.
Not right now. Okay, but if we could.
But you're okay with that, ah?
If we can get it and then add it to the bullet point list, if there's, you know, under the pier, there's one or two must-dos, or three, or whatever, then we can have them on this list.
Yeah, that's going to be a next week, a next week list.
Oh, yeah. No, 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 no.
We don't have a meeting next week, so.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Well.
So, but if you guys want, I'm going to pack it for the following week meeting. I have to have them by Wednesday, because I'd have to send that agenda by Thursday. So, I mean, it's up to you. We could bring it to them.
I cannot have that together.
I'm talking about their priority stuff. Yeah, so I don't know that her part will be able to be in there. If you just want to do the pier and the pier building.
I got a process question. Since, since these are budget workshops, and they're basically, or they're separate workshops with a, with a beginning and an end that, that we still have to follow the agenda preparation rules.
So I prefer.
Because if it's a continued.
I prefer to do it different meetings because it's cleaner, because then, like, there's different information for each meeting, so I prefer to just send out a different. But, but we can continue.
With a two-day notice? So these meetings all have a?
Forty, yeah.
Forty-eight hour notice?
Book business days is what they prefer.
Got it.
So our next meeting is the thirteenth?
The eighteenth.
No, that one's canceled.
The thirteenth.
Okay.
While you guys are all looking at your calendars, I'm going off.
We don't have one on the thirteenth.
No, no, this is today, we combined today.
The thirteenth was canceled. We were wondering if there's any way that we can combine the meetings of, sorry. There's one that the week before staff and one of the commissioners. It'd be a lot easier if we could combine the April third and the April 12th meeting to the April 12th. And it's just revenue that day, so it wouldn't be a problem to talk about revenues in under three hours. If we could cancel the meeting on the third and make it all on the 12th, if that works for everybody.
Well, actually, what I would like to do, I was going to bring this up when we got closer to it, but, oh my God, no, that's my, hold on. I was hoping we could move the third to the first. Is there any way we can do?
That's even worse for, for us, because we got staff and commissioners that are gone.
On the, on the week of the first?
The week prior, which goes to agenda prep. That's what I was.
Right, the agenda, right.
Oh, yeah, that's Easter, yeah.
So our next meeting is the eighteenth?
Correct.
Right.
And so you're saying by the thirteenth, you want to have our priority list?
If that's next Wednesday, yes.
That's fine.
Yes.
And so for that, we're just going to say pier?
Pier building.
And then when we get the information from Christie, that'll just move to the top priority, because if it's a legal obligation, then it goes to the top. Must do.
Right.
So that isn't going to hinder anything that we're doing.
Right.
And then the nineteenth is our BOC meeting.
Right.
So we're going to do all the eighteenth and nineteenth?
Eighteenth and nineteenth of March. And we were looking to combine the third of April with the 12th, on the 12th, and get rid of the third.
That would be a wonderful idea.
So we have no meeting on the week of the 25th?
Of March?
Yeah.
Correct, because, right, because after you get all of our requests, the next thing would be the revenue. That would be the next stage in the process.
And so why does the revenue take so long? Because it seems like if you kind of know what that is.
It doesn't.
That's why we're suggesting to combine them.
But that's not what she means. They have to get the state distributed revenue. We don't have all the information in to provide you with us. You guys were talking about two different things, so. It won't, it won't take long for you guys to discuss it, most likely, but it will take, they need time to prep it in order for you to be able to discuss it, or else the numbers won't be.
Good.
We'll be, we'll be guessing at that point if we don't have enough time to prepare.
And, and you feel like you don't get that information until April?
Yeah, April is when we usually talk about the, the revenue.
Okay.
I'm good with that. That'll help a lot.
So say that one more time. Which two dates do you want to combine?
The third with the 12th, but on the 12th, so canceled, cancel April 3rd.
And that'll talk about all, all revenue?
All revenues in one day. And honestly, that's probably a good thing, you know, sometimes things interrelate with each other, so if that works for you guys.
It works for me.
So no meeting the eleventh?
The third, yeah.
Or the third?
Madam Clerk, are you at the point you can summarize that real simple?
I was trying to get.
And I will cross out April 3rd on your list, and I will send you the amended one, and I'll send it out to the public, too, so everybody knows that the third is canceled.
Thank you.
Okay, back to our regularly scheduled program.
Sorry.
So we have to have to you by Wednesday our priority list, but you're going to send us the? You're not going to send us?
I won't send you it again unless you guys want me to.
No, we don't need it. I already got enough in my email.
And then we're, Wednesday, so if you get Wednesday.
What time will I be to be on the 12th?
Same time that it was, which is the 3:00 PM. So just to summarize that, then, we're going to take this list that we have for the pier, we're going to make it say pier and pier building, and then you're just going to go one through however many bullets there are.
Correct.
And return them to me by Wednesday, so I can have them in an agenda by Thursday, right?
Perfect.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I heard.
No, I, I agree. I just, if those extra bullets are the land, maybe it's, you know, property. And I'm, you know, reading through the agreement, it sounded like RV Park, certain things, we, we said we had to do with the, you know, weren't the building necessarily, or weren't the structure, it was just the property, the land. So I guess we'll just wait until we see the list and see whether or not it's a third bullet. That make sense?
No, I missed what you said there.
Well, it just seemed like some of the must-dos in the Part F grant agreement were associated with the land, not the building, not the structure, but.
Yeah, it, it was land acquisition.
Right.
But there's things that you can't do, like the, the food that's served on the site plan, that has to be concessions. You can't call it a restaurant. They went through that with the, the whole board on the speakerphone. It's concessions anywhere in the state where they've given money at a pier. It's in perpetuity. You have to start development within five years. Those kinds of things are what are listed in your agreement.
Okay.
Okay, we'll, we'll put it together.
Okay.
Good. Okay.
I'm good.
Next lady. May I go ahead to the next lady?
Whatever you say, behind the mic. Next item.
Okay, y'all ready?
Ready, ready.
Okay, this budget presents a dive into what expenses will look like for the next fiscal year built from a zero-based budget approach. It is more project and general operations-based. It would have been hard just to give you a wants list because it's not things like, I need a dump truck. So therefore, you have before you the first run of the budget and not what, I mean, it's way more than what you guys asked for today as far as B-Park goes. It does not include any professional services for either the pier or Block Q, because those are not known at this time. It also doesn't currently allocate any money towards pier repair because the process is on hold. So if you guys decided you were putting anything in the budget, you'd have to go back and add it to this. It gives an estimate for stormwater for part of Block Q, where the bathroom and associated parking will be housed, which is as part of your grant. In speaking to the architect when he was here yesterday for the PRAB meeting, the estimate out to the side in your line that says Block Q for the project is 710,000. Instead of the 150 estimate for stormwater, he thinks that would be more like 200 for that area. So for the next go-around, you would see that line say 760 instead of 710. The grant requirement is also included in that line for the whole amount, because you have to spend the whole amount upfront and get reimbursed. When you see your revenues in April, you would then see the offsetting 75% from the state show up in the revenue side.
So the stormwater is just for the bathroom?
And the parking.
The 200K and the parking and the door, okay.
The budget also includes the ADA projects that the staff has communicated will need to be moved in next year as an obligation because they were not accomplished this year. It also takes care of your debt service for central reach, Block Q and the pier, along with the associated debt interest. The note that is highlighted regarding the dumpster on the second page is an internal note for us. We've always had a dumpster, but it's usually housed in access and recreation, and we need to cost it out of the contract and services sanitation line. So at once the budget is passed, then Margaret would know that lines stay there to remind us that account payable would need to move where the cost center is. It's not a new dumpster.
Where is that? I'm sorry.
It's on the second page where you see the highlight, and it says?
Oh, okay.
Add dumpster for trash removal, 20,000. But it's not a new dumpster. It just changes lines where it's normally housed.
Okay.
That highlights for our purposes. The numbers as presented gambles with the idea that 83,000 will be enough for dredging the Lockwood Folly inlet matched with what remains in the federal appropriations budget for operation and maintenance. If more maintenance is needed or another miscaddy event is required, the BOC would be looking at a budget amendment to add more. If you end up keeping that earmark and you didn't earmark, then obviously you wouldn't tap into that line, so.
So did, did we have the Lockwood Folly in the budget for this year?
We did, because we had the Ben Widener portion, and we have to pay for our part of that. So Ben Widener, we have to pay for to get.
And so what's in this budget is for the every other year that we do with Oak Island? And so next?
This is just operating, operation and maintenance with the Merton or the Merit. It doesn't count the, the Ben Widener, which is every other year. Normally, if it's like, this year's budget was around 343,000 in that line. So that's kind of a overall synopsis of what you see here. Again, it's more detailed than what you asked for with the first go-around. Had a couple of questions that come in today about the D's and the I's. That's a decrease or increase from last year? If it was, you know, something more than a couple hundred dollars.
To the point of the East End project and Lockwood Folly inlet, the corps communicated, that project's going pretty good, and they should be finished on that middle of next week. and they should be finished on that middle of next week.
All right.
And, I mean, they, they, I don't, they haven't told me how many, how much yardage has been placed, but normally, whenever they do up to a 200,000 cubic yard placement with a full-width berm, it goes from amazing grace down to block aid runner. And I don't know how wide their berm is, but they've been at block aid runner about three days ago. So, it's, it's good saying, and.
Great.
Good project.
So, that was to get you started with a little overview, and I'll be glad to take questions.
So, this overall is the B Park expense budget, is that what we're looking at?
Yeah.
Okay.
I've got a couple of questions, if you don't mind. Near the top, we have interest on C R I I. What is C R, there's no dollars associated, I was just curious.
Central Reach 2.
Okay.
These lines stay in here, this is a running spreadsheet from year to year, so if there's nothing besides it, it could be something very old.
Okay.
Like Courtesy Patrol was before I ever got here, but we tend not to go back in and delete the lines, because there may be something that comes along.
Okay, cool. On professional services at 128.8, I was looking at the numbers in the notes, and it seems like that, I'm not understanding the 128.8, it looks like it needs to be more like 175. So, I'm not.
So, of the 140, Ward and Smith, if you look at the current proceeds, only 93.8 of that is paid out of B Park, 46.9 comes from canal dredging.
Okay, all right.
For the third thing that they cover.
I just lumped them all together, my mistake.
Yeah, and then 25,000 for ATM, 10,000 for attorney's fees, if we need any special attorney assistance. And then, the sand search completion, I left that on there, because they're slated to finish this year, but if they don't finish any part of the current sand search, then I would have to go back in before the budget's finalized and put something there, and then add it to the total.
Okay.
So, with Ward and Smith, does that include, they go to the Ferguson group sometimes, too, right, additional?
Yes, sir, if you look out, it says 140,700, Ward and Smith, through December, 9, 2, 7, 5 months, plus 2,000 a month per year. The 2,000 a month covers the Ferguson group.
Okay.
I have a question about, I see your group insurance, doesn't seem like that went up since last year.
We haven't updated it, because we hadn't got the insurance numbers yet.
I was pretty sure that couldn't be right.
We're not expecting a huge increase there, but it's probabilistic.
I wasn't expecting my insurance increases either.
And then, I see on the next one, retirement, that went up 37%. From 13,000 from last year?
I don't, I don't plug the salary or retirement number, so I can't answer your question, but.
Right after group insurance is retirement rec, that's 13,000 compared to last year was 9,000. 9,000 something.
Those are updated numbers, David, after the salary information and the stuff that, from you and Daniel, so I can't answer that.
We'll check that.
Sorry, that just seemed like a huge increase, I didn't know what.
So, that's the contribution to the retirement plan, is that what it is?
Yes.
Christie, I've got a question for the last line on the bottom, the Holden Beach promotion. Driving down the beach, I'm not sure we need to promote Holden anymore. As David has said before, we've been found. What happens if we don't spend that money? I mean, it's not a lot of money, but.
You're going to be out of compliance with your B Park law, because you're already sand-heavy.
Okay, so that's a must-do, that's a legal requirement.
Or that tourism column, we, if you look, if you drive down 17, we've got a billboard for Holden Beach. We do marketing materials, but you'd kind of want to leave that money alone.
Okay.
The snowflakes is a big expense that people don't realize.
The snowflakes for the boulevard every year, that's about a $10,000 cost.
Okay.
And that's in your promotion?
Yeah.
Let's put them up, take them down, or add new ones, or fix them, or?
Buy them.
Buy more, okay.
Or replace the ones that are.
Because they go quickly. They don't last long.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So, I was curious about that, because I know with B Park, there are certain restrictions, you know, one penny or whatever's got to go back to the county, and then, so, how do we make sure we're compliant? Just by adding these categories, and we reach the percent that we need to reach?
Yeah, staff's working on that, just with this budget, because we do it as each year, but we're working on that with this budget, have been working on that this week, but basically, you go by line by line and decide if it's a tourism-related expense or sand-direct related expense, then you go through your 2%, 3%.
Okay.
On the second page, can I ask you, the Chamber of Commerce, what do they do for us?
Bring, bring more people to the beach.
To Rick's point, do we really need to do that? We're already.
Tourism-related expense.
So, what do they do, they advertise for Holden Beach somewhere? And what is the next one, contributions to B Park?
So, we talked about this a little bit at the last meeting, but each fund makes contributions for people that ask. So, in the past, that there's been Brunswick Arts Council, if they've done a project like painting our mural on our bathroom, we've done some advertising on billboards for like sporting groups, if somebody made it to a final, or that kind of thing. So, we put Holden Beach's name out. It's, it's whatever the requests come in, they're reviewed by the finance officer, and then each fund has requests, and that's the total amount that we give out.
So, it's not just straight charity, it's?
No.
No.
Matter of fact, the, the process is, is there's an application, it has to be filed.
They've somehow contributed to Holden Beach?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
As long as we're on those lines, then next line down, access and recreation, I was trying to total it up, and, well, two things. One is the 801, does this have some ADA projects in it, too? Because I saw ADA for Halsted a little bit further down.
Yeah, that's because it's site-specific, and Halsted is not part of the Key Bridge Agreement. Your Key Bridge Agreement items are in the access and recreation line.
Okay.
And you don't want me to put those totals there, because that's like going to the car dealer and telling them how much money you have in your pocket before you bid the project.
Got you.
Okay, so the 801 and Avenue E is the ones you're really talking about, because they're.
Those are the ones that don't have totals, that give you the total on the left, where the column is, because we would be telling our contractors how much we anticipate that project costs.
Good.
Okay.
Under Halsted for ADA, I was, I thought we had finished that, we still got more to do there?
Yeah, we have some handrail work to do there.
Oh, okay.
At your, when Tim gave your report at last month's meeting, he had other ADA projects at the bottom, and he listed for stuff for Halsted. That estimate is based on what we've been paying for handrails, and he was going to get a further estimate, but for the purpose of today's workshop, that's the best thing, I had to go in that line, it could change.
All right.
So, for the salaries beach project, that's another 28% increase, and I, I know that one's kind of a convoluted thing, where you got, is that like the thing below where it says 75% of PW's salary, 0.25% of three employees? And before, it had like another employee plus the 75%?
It is, it's the rec tech position plus three-quarters equivalent, so it's 1.75 full-time equivalent.
But again, that one went way up, 28% compared to last year. I didn't know if you.
Well, the rec tech is new, right?
I didn't know, no, no, the rec tech was there. I didn't know if you added more bodies to that or something?
No.
Well, anyway, just take a look at that.
Yeah, it's a rec tech and what, I didn't?
This 0.75 that she has noted down here.
Okay.
The 7.75 of the.
Public Works?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right?
A public works guy, person?
Yes.
Quarter of three employees.
Three individual positions.
Quarter of three people, but yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, there's three-quarters of a full-time equivalent.
And then, again, if you look at the retirement, that went up 62%, so something's screwy with your retirement number. My only final comment is, I thought you recommended that the beach ranger might be something that should be cut, because you didn't see the value in it.
Well, I didn't say that exactly, I said if you guys.
That's what I heard.
No. I said that if you guys were drawing a line on priorities, which it sounded like at your first budget meeting you were, and you were looking at things that you had to cut from the budget, that that program would be one that you could look at as cutting, because, not because it wasn't valuable and that they don't provide a good service, but because it has grown past the scope of them being able to accomplish its original goal and mission.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, it's less than 1%, so it's not exactly a significant reduction. So, be, going back to the first page, beach vegetation planting, and I think there was another one. These were in case of storms, or we're going to plant?
We normally plant every year, but it's, it's basically what our planning that we do every year, at this point, we go in and we're replacing stuff that we may lose, if we don't lose stuff during, even, and I'm not talking about hurricanes, but, you know, we can have just regular storm events like we had in the winter that inundate our plants, and so, we need to do a replacement.
Okay. So, there was another one in there, same thing, I don't think I can find it now, but it was a question of, we're putting the money in there in the event we have a need for them?
Well, I'd like to interject something there. Putting it in there if we have a need, we need to budget for it, because we know that we're going to have blows that aren't hurricanes, and it's going to, it's going to tear stuff up on the front. So, it's, it's almost like it's routine maintenance, it will happen. It won't be, it won't be a cat for storm, but it's going to be a northeast gale like we had three weeks ago that tears up some stuff.
But if you look at last, if you look at the previous time we talked about this, you spent zero of that in '23, so then you budgeted 50,000, and you spent zero of that in this budget, so.
Which line?
I thought we were talking about beach vegetation.
We've spent that money, we just hadn't spent it by last time, because it wasn't the time of year to do it yet, but they're going to, they're starting next week.
Okay, so you will spend the, some of the money that you had in last year.
Because you've got to remember on the planting, it's dictated by planting season and turtle season, so you've got to hit the sweet spot.
Okay.
But I do think, and the reason we didn't do it last year, I believe, is because it was part of our Central Reach project. So, it was embedded in part of the project that FEMA reimbursed us for plants, so the 2022, '23 would have been captured with that. But I think Tom's question is to the, if I'm not mistaken, when we do storm surveys, the depths of closure.
Yeah, that's the one.
We used to budget for three, and that was predicated on us getting hit with Florence, Michael, and Dorian, back to back to back, and when that happens, the rate at which the town has to respond to telling what our losses were for the beach, all of that happens in a one-to-two week period, and there's no time to call a BOC meeting, get approval to run the surveys, like, they're wanting real-time data in order to give us an obligation and decide what total our losses, North Carolina losses are from FEMA. So, we took it down from three, once we stopped getting bombarded so frequently, down to one, and we feel like one is a minimum.
Okay, I mean, I think, iterating, I think what you said, David, is you put it in there for three, and if you don't have a storm, it just falls with the fun balance.
Yeah, and that's the governor's office, that, because they're communicating with the president on making a federal declaration, and a lot of times, whenever we have the damages on the beach strand, don't know if they're going to be counted in the future for that, but the damages on the beaches are of such, because of the sand prices, are such that a lot of times, it's the beach damages that carry the federal declaration for the whole state.
But let, let's just be clear that one is all that's in here.
One.
One, not three, I said we used to do three, but one is what's in here.
So, if we get hit with more than one storm.
You're going to have to come back to you.
Come back, we'll be here.
Yeah.
Because if we don't do that, then we can't file a claim from FEMA, right?
Absolutely.
Yep.
It's, it's going to make the process longer.
And it sounds like the same thing is in this other debris removal, which you actually have 60k in there for raking and tilling, so debris removal is kind of, but that's a, just a holder in case you need it, because you don't know if you're going to need it.
Right, we spent, so, within the last few weeks, we did, we told you guys in communication that we went ahead and did a rock raking, just to be prudent, because of the amount that we were seeing on the strand, and we got congratulated by the agencies for self-initiating that. We spent 15,000 out of this year's budget accomplishing that, but the tilling is a whole separate requirement that comes, that mandated from the state. We wouldn't do that unless they tell us that we have to do it, but because it is on our permit, that it's required, we go ahead and put it in the budget, so if they come down and say you have to go, that we stand ready, and it's not coming at you for a large sum of money at the time of year, because this would be when they're checking.
Okay.
Up, kind of quarter of the way down on the first, or third of the way to the first page, the 441 Utilities Insurance, 34,000, so that's the pier, that's the Port of Johns, that's insurance, just the pier, or beyond the pier? Bathroom cleaning, I'm just trying to understand what the.
Yeah, it's all those items listed just for that, we say site-specific, so it's not insurance for all the other facilities in the town, it's just for that one site.
Okay, and that's liability, or what, what kind of insurance do we have on it?
It's, it's the portion of, it's the same insurance that the rest of the town facilities have, it's.
Is there share?
Blanket policy with the league, liability, property, loss, death, all that stuff.
So, it's allocated to the properties?
Yes.
And the internship is 12 weeks, summer intern?
We have an advertisement out for this year, but we don't have one yet.
And then, very top, the transfer to the accommodation tax, I mean, that was estimated based on what we think B Parks is? Or how did we?
Estimated as a calculation off the revenue, the collections of accommodations tax.
Okay, so that'll get tweaked when we tweak the revenue number? It's not based on last year's, there's a?
No, that, that is 98.5% of 1% of the one penny, and it's based on a $4.1 million revenue estimate.
Okay.
We think that formula is correct.
Sounds impressive.
The formula is correct, is the 4.1 million.
Yeah, exactly.
Very precise estimate. It's covered by it. Let's move on, anybody else? Anything else?
Thanks a lot.
I'm good, thank you.
I see what you did there, Chris, you got five bullets, so that's only five questions, right?
Hopefully.
He's been doing it for a while.
Yeah.
Well, just starting off, you can see off the spreadsheet there, I was just getting big-ticket items, needing to deal with some expense that we're going to have over this year. The streets department, it had no big needs, sanitation department has got no needs, we're good on equipment flows, the water and sewer department is usually through the family. And the first one there was a F1 pickup truck, 50,002, 42. Second one is 150 kilowatt generator set, pump station replacement there, also with a trailer, 74. 150 kilowatt generator set, pump station replacement there, also with a trailer, $74, $642. And the two biggest ticket items I've got is the AC system from pump station four. I know you'll probably remember where I carried you down and I showed you what we're going to get the salt corrodes and stuff through the, all of them. The air conditioner was never added, but I put in that facility. And I do have an estimate there that I, the reason it's got the question, Martin, is because I didn't get these in time. And I will have to say, what I give you right now verbally is not aged and stoned. That's just me taking a set of plants and dropping molds somewhere, and then looking at them and giving them a price. With the price tag I seen, I'm sure you probably won't send it out. That being said, the AC system alone is like $47,800, and that's not including the $10,600 debt that's got set on behind the bill. So, you're roughly around $60,000. I would say this, after I really do a good thorough inventory check, it may be that I could sort that cost in this year's budget, provided the numbers come back like that if we send them out to bids. And I also would like to discuss some of it with Tim there because, you know, we've got requirements with breakaway walls and stuff, maybe go over and make sure I'm cashing something that's possible. So, I would love to research that. And also, the bottom of that station, it had the louvered panels that stood aside the walls. Every time it rains, you've got rainwater blowing in, and it's just, it's just a bad situation. The louvered panels and walls, there's big, that bottom you're talking about, about another $33,000 left. Like I said, that was also just a verbal conversation with somebody looking at it, but the person that gave me that, I'm not calling them names. I've seen real good numbers out there in the past that were far better lower than any other. But sewer pump station number two upgrade, we see no price tag on that. If I had a wish list or something that had to happen, I hope we can follow through and make that happen, because that's the biggest thing in the government. There's one other thing that I, I don't have on this list, because I really don't think that right now is the kind of good there, and that's where we're talking about that portable vacuum probably skewed. I think that's something we might need in the future, but before I committed to saying we're going to spend $700,000, I'd love to research that out real good and make sure we're getting what we need, that I'd rather make sure that we get pump station two before where it needs to be before we start putting something else on our plate. That, that's really about all I got to add here, but if anybody's got any questions, I'd like to answer. I'd just let them try.
My one question, Chris, had to do with that vac system, and I understand that's a big-ticket item, and definitely pump station two needs to get fixed first. Just, let's, can we keep it on the list, or next time around, just have it as, you know, cost TBD or whatever, because I, I don't want to lose sight of that one. Like we've said, you may never need it, but if you do need it, you don't have time to go get it.
Yeah, I could keep anything on this, you know, that y'all have. I do have the, the quote I said, it was obviously $100,000, and that's just a spitball number that they sent within a few hours after.
Man, that seems so expensive, because it's largely for the controller, right?
Yeah, well, when you think about it, the equipment, if we put in one of those stations, if it's a two-pump system, it's about $300,000. And if I were going to do one, I would at least have left it noted that it had three pumps on it. But you've got to keep in mind here, pump station one, if you just got four pumps on it, then you could probably wing by with three pumps, but it would be, it would be tight.
Well, we should get what, trying to get what we need.
And then we got also figured there are probably some additional wiring and stuff at stations, because whatever you do, it needs to be something where it's blood can play, and I hate to use the word idiot, but sometimes I'm an idiot. It needs to be something fairly sensible, where somebody wouldn't have to have a college degree to figure out who to do.
Yeah, particularly if you're doing it in the middle of bad weather. I agree with you. I just don't want to lose sight of it. Me personally, I think being able to do that's important, and I think we had it as almost a nice-to-do on the list somewhere, but-
I was really shocked when I reached out thinking that maybe we could trade some of our old pump stuff back to them, you know, because it's evaluated, but I was real shocked when the $23,000 pump offered us $1,000, it cost me $1,000, shit it took.
Could we, could we have them build it with our spare pumps?
Do what?
Could we give them our spare pumps and build it?
Well, that's what I was thinking in the beginning, after he got through after we had pumps.
I got you.
And they told me what it cost shit back, and all, you know, I, that could probably get kind of complicated, right there saying, oh, stuff, but you have to work on that.
You and I can discuss this offline from this. I just, you know, I just, I'd like to see us target getting that sometime if we can.
I'd also like to point out the pictures he sent me. I can, I'll make copies of this for the next time we come, to make sure everybody's got a copy, and I'll send pictures of what they sent, everything that's in there he made. And the trailer that had it sitting on was about, I couldn't have any sides or anything on it. And to me, that'd be just pure foolish for pure rainy weather or something like that. You couldn't have it sitting in the rain, you know. You need to, it needs to be in a pump utility trailer that the side goes up on something that you can keep the, keep the rain out of it.
Yeah.
I wouldn't want to shoot myself in the foot. I ain't got many more left.
All right. Well, you and I can talk about that some other time when you're not so busy.
All right.
All right. That's all I got. Thanks.
I just had kind of a, I guess, a general, some of this is Public Works in the general fund, and some of it's Water Sewer Fund, or does this all go into one fund with these items that we're talking about?
Everything that I just mentioned right there would be in operation.
I mean-
Water Sewer, or?
Streets and sanitation are in the general fund.
Right. Public Works is too, right?
Public Works is in three funds.
Okay. So that was, you know, when we're talking about these numbers, because Water Sewer is different, yeah, I mean, it's enterprise fund, so it's a different beast than putting something in the general fund.
Correct.
Okay. So, where do these fall?
The water and sewer department needs will fall in the water and sewer department fund thirty.
Okay. So even the trucks would, okay.
Yeah.
Can you explain the second bullet? What is that for?
Is that the generator?
The jet set, 150, yeah.
That's, that's actually, we tried to purchase, when I first done our CIP plan, we had a generator in there every four years. But the way it's worked out, it's been taking me over, when I ordered one, it's been taking over a year to get it. So, basically, we've been getting one every two years. It's replacing the generator that's at the pump station now. And I've actually, should have mentioned this at the beginning, I have switched to aluminum trailers, so maybe in the future, we can save about $10,000 every time we do it, because aluminum trailer is going to rust away like what I'm seeing out those records, steel trailers.
So which station is this for?
Two.
The one we're upgrading?
Mm-hmm.
So wouldn't that just be part of the upgrade cost, to do it all at once, or?
I have, well, from my experience, you can buy the generator cheaper straight out, and I'll put it on that garage. You want that guy that's going to buy it. If he's going to buy it for six, he's going to set us for a hundred. I think we already buried it.
You're going to get a big upgrade on it.
Yeah, contractors normally put at least 10% on it.
I hear you. We're also getting grant money and money paid for the project, right?
Well, money's money. We don't know what the bid probably is going to be when we, when we do it now. It might not happen to. That's what we've happened two or three times before, so I don't want to hang my hat on that.
So if you had to prioritize these bullets, what would be your top two or three?
Pump station.
Right. Good answer.
Pump station, air conditioning, and there ain't no doubt about it, you're going to have a generator, because I get an inspection, and we ain't got no generator down there. Man ain't going to watch.
Critical facility.
It's a critical facility. But everyone leaves right here in my mind, and I can't do that.
So I don't see a truck on the capital improvement plan for this year, because you had one last year, and it says for another one next year?
Yeah.
And if I'm looking at your, Daniel's list of trucks, so you have nine trucks right now?
If I'm not bad mistaken, I think there's five trucks, and they're actually listed in the border, and I think there's one in sanitation, one in streets, and a dump truck.
All right. So Daniel has five, okay, I'm not going to count the big one, like your big dump truck. That, there's nine F-150s or Dodge 1500, then you have your vacuum truck, and then you have three to be sold, the 2009, 2020, and the 2006. So I'm seeing nine, unless I'm missing something, I'm seeing nine trucks. But how many employees do you have?
I've got seven employees.
Plus you, so that's eight?
No, I'm under seven. We do have one vehicle that's a hand-me-down fleet truck that we leave inside of the shop. There, if we have a breakdown or something, we can use to get in, and also spray the skids with that truck right there. So I've actually got five, what I call five vehicles that's in the water and sewer department.
I think, I got the same question. So are we adding a truck, or are we replacing one of these trucks?
I'm not adding them, I'm replacing them.
Which one are we getting rid of, then?
I don't have the one number.
It would, it would be the oldest truck.
Well, you got one, you got three that say to be sold or salvaged.
Well, yeah, to be sold and salvaged is definitely gone.
Yeah, I'm not counting those things.
Okay.
That was actually stuff that I got rid of in last year's budget.
So the older ones, there's a 2011 one, and then there's a 2014. Those are the oldest ones. Everything else is 20, 21, 22. Well, there's a 16 that doesn't have a mileage on it. These are ones with 90,000 miles?
You see the 16 that doesn't have a mileage on it, right after the 90,000? There's no mileage on that 2016 truck? But that's nine trucks, starting at 4,000, 9,000, 40,000, 57, 92, 35, between 15 and 90, and then no, no mileage. So obviously, two of them rolled, but that still leaves seven that have almost no miles on them.
We'll check that and get back to you.
Okay.
I don't have any Dodge left, and I've sold quite a few, but we still got two more that's got to go on the auto check, but I'll check that and make sure I can get something of this right as far as water vehicles. I've got five pickups that I call water vehicles, and we got the street and sanitation pickup, about seven trucks. We've got four and three-quarter million that's fabricated or paid out of water and sewer department. Got none that's in the road.
So I have a general, I've had a lot of people asking me upset about why do the employees and the police drive vehicles home, because that's a big cost to the town as far as wear and tear on the vehicles and the gas. So, I'm just wondering if, have we looked, does Oak Island and Ocean Isle do that, let all their employees drive trucks home?
I think they do, as far as my, say, my, of course, we have to get the vehicles pretty often to a pretty coffee in the morning to run it down here on the hood on road search, you know, sewer and water things. It's a lot quicker, but that man had that truck there too, and this governor tried to restart the layer, you know.
I'm just throwing that out there as a general. I mean, I've had phone calls of people saying that-
I feel also the same too. When he's speaking, when they were hired, that was considered in their salary, and I was worried, and so I, I just now got back at 4:00, 5:00, and I hope, I think it starts nagging through the people. I know when I was hired, that's what I was hired with.
Is part of your compensation package, is that?
Well, yeah.
Personal?
Took this job there, and people, but I'm not really shoving that down the fence, like I said. I, when we go home, it ain't over, we're going to be back here 8:00, 9:00 in the morning. It's, it's nothing uncommon. My thing is very 2:00, 3:00 in the morning. And it ain't like we're just, you know, working in a, in an office here, and we get back in the morning to the office to see if we're going to be there. 8:00, 9:00, that night, the quicker I can get here, the better it is.
And the time savings is what? You don't have to go pick up a truck at the EOC, or?
Yeah, plus you got your tools on, that's what we do. You're going to knock me out by the shop, you just come out straight to the yard.
Yeah.
I will say what to say from the two of mine, four of us live probably within, I mean, I think 10 miles. So, that's not, that's not like that much of miles.
No, that isn't. And they're, they don't use them for personal use, they're not allowed to rent?
No, not at all. Personal, that's not like, busting in storms and stuff, you know, and everybody, and everybody goes out of town, but the weather's getting rough, yes, well, public workers, people are the last people to leave, and a lot of times, we don't leave. And when we come back, we defer back. And there's, it's not because anybody's truck, they go up and do what they want to do that week, you know, go get groceries while they're risking business.
We wouldn't want you bringing your personal vehicles over here in a storm to get the pickup anyway.
And I haven't, another thing, you know, if I took every people staying home, and I thought it was going to be that big of a week, probably couldn't get the parking lot. Bad enough on the way, you tell your neighbors, seriously. We built up there the other morning when they were voting, and I've never seen that many people back early voting. The whole parking lot was full. We couldn't, we couldn't even get the parking lot that we had. Everyone, get that tight, you know, every bit makes a difference.
Can I comment on the, Chris's, streets department, his statement there, no big-ticket needs? That's not to say that there's not going to be any big-ticket items, because we've been trying to, in our streets assessment, we've been trying to take down a set of streets every year. So that, that's, that's a big-ticket item.
It would be the same as last year's budget, though, right? Because you're doing the same thing.
Similar.
Well, I'd be able to, that was about the tractor, backup, equipment, but you know, far as recycling the streets or recycling the streets or something like that, it's pretty much the same usual expenses, and while we're back in the streets. One thing that I probably, you'll probably will see increasing is I need to increase the cycle replacement, because we only have about $6,000 in there that we've been budgeting. It don't take much concrete this day and time to use $6,000.
What are you doing with Brunswick Avenue where you dug it up? Are you going to-
Go patch it.
Go patch it. Too bad you couldn't-
I'm also working on getting prices on replacing the water line that's going across right there, which is not big, it's like two units of pipe.
Yeah.
That's AC line, and we do have a situation where it settled down, and it caused the line to break, and then I think the dump trucks might have run over from this VOP project that broke again. I wish I could do it before summer, but there's no way, and I think I can get that in my schedule, so I'm just going to try to see if I can get the crisis and then try to do it after the season.
And when there's no dump trucks running.
Yeah. Well, Mike, let me, let me tell you a little story. It broke out the January, and we ordered some special cupons that actually go around the bill, and then encapsulates everything, and they're good cupons. Well, I had them go there and actually put those cupons on, trying to help the situation. And I reckon where they disturbed the ground, they didn't get it packed that good. And when it rained the Friday before last, when it was so rainy, I jumped right straight out of bed and run down there and jumped right ways deep in mud, and we spent about three hours down there, four hours, getting that fixed. And we got it fixed. And then Monday morning, when I came in, I came in to find out DOT has decided to divert the traffic, and they're running dump trucks now that they're running over it, and it's just like walking around in the mud, sneaking in mud. And they didn't really see the need to move that fast, so I walked the road with the truck that owns the town, owns that property right there, and DOT, and then they could figure out what everyone was doing. There weren't nobody else going down the road. And then they moved, then they moved to change track effect. That's just the way my world goes.
That's good.
Yep.
Anything else? Is there more? I'd like to let your mother do the adjournment.
Second.
Oh, favor say aye.
Aye.
Wow.
We adjourn.